Call the meeting to a order, please stand for the flag salute. Aye.
Good evening, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice that this meeting pursuant to the open public media act has been given in the following manner: by emailing written notice to the Courier-Post in the retrospect on January 10, 2019; by posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the municipal building on January 10, 2019; by filing written notice with the clerk of the Borough Woodland on January 10, 2019. Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
President.
Mr. Cook?
President.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here.
At this point here, we full file now with committee report, we start out with public safety. Mr. Fuentes?
I'm sorry, I do apologize, Finance Council.
Good evening, we're the council's visitor and clerk, I'm the president, the council and the public, this is my report for financial for seven one nineteen to seven thirty-one nineteen. Property tax, tax payment, hundred and twenty-five count, that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, a hundred and forty-five thousand seventy-one cent. SP charges payment nine, that's one thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifteen cents. Lien payment three, that's five hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Certag occupancy seven, which is a total of six seventy, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Construction permit six, that's a total of two thousand and sixty-four dollars. Landlord registration twenty-eight, that's three thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. MRNA, that's five, which is a total of seven thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Health deductions two, that's a total of three thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-nine, ninety-seven cents. Total is two hundred and fourteen, which comes out to a hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Now, I have the Borough Woodland Municipal Court revenue. July is, uh, Borough, four thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, seventy-six cents. County, two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. State, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, which is a total of eight thousand three hundred and one forty dollars, which is give us the town's get total, fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. This is my report for the Municipal Court and report for the Borough Woodland.
You heard the report of Finance, can I get a motion, second to receive a file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Feliciano, second by Councilman Chueki, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point now, we move forward with buildings and property, Councilman Chueki?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Solicitor, and our secretary, council, also our residents. My report for public buildings and grounds, uh, whole rental for the month of May and June, I'll be reading north on. Uh, for the month of May, we had three rentals, uh, excuse me, two rentals equaling up to five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, those rentals were Passy Jackson for, uh, four fifty, and the Democratic Club for a hundred dollars. For the month of June, we had three rentals, equaling up to six hundred and fifty dollars. That was Feliciano for a hundred, and we have, uh, Laverne Davis for a hundred, uh, excuse me, for four fifty. And that's my report for the month of June, May, June.
You heard the report of public buildings, any question? I just want to mention for correction, Sharon Early, you see her name, she rented the hall for the Democratic Social, that's what it was.
Alright, thank you.
Any other question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
And motion second? Motion second?
Motion.
Councilman Chueki?
Second.
Second by Feliciano. Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point now, we go with public safety.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam Clerk, Solicitor, Madam President, members of council, residents and guests. My report is for the month of July, 2019. Total number of service calls were four hundred and eighty, parking summons were eighteen, moving violations were eighty, adult arrests six, juvenile arrests one, driving under the influence two, verordinate sixteen. The department towed two vehicles during this month. Uniform crime report is as follows: robbery, one, aggravated assault, one, simple assault, two, theft, eleven, burglary, two, disorderly conduct, six, drug offenses, zero, motor vehicle theft, two. This report was respectfully submitted by the Public Safety Director, Edwin Figueroa. That concludes my report.
You heard the report of public safety, can I get a motion, just second to receive a file?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Early, second by Councilman Chueki, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, we move forward with emergency management, Councilman Chueki?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Secretary, uh, Solicitor, Councilmember, council question, uh, residents and our visitors. At this time, I did not receive the statistics from the county, and I will postpone my July report and to be held in August. Thank you.
Forward there, Public Affairs Councilwoman Feliciano.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Solicitor, Madam Clerk, Council President, Council and the public, this is my report for the month of August, I'm sorry, for the month of July, forgive me. First of all, we were able to celebrate this past Tuesday, the National Night Out. It's very important to our community that we get involved and participate as a community, and so we were able to have a huge turnout this particular year. So I'd like to extend the thanks to our council and the mayor, to our police department and to the fire department. We had a lot of children come in this eve, um, for that evening, uh, we were able to rattle off, um, three, three bikes, which was amazing. Um, we had a lot of people very interested in, in coming, and, um, we're very happy with their winnings that evening, right? And of course, we were able to hand out a lot of, um, materials and things like that promoting police safety and community safety. Moving forward, um, we're gonna be, um, tearing down the tennis courts, um, and we're gonna be replacing them with a soccer field, so you may be seeing construction, um, in that area, um, beginning sometime in this month, going into September. And finally, for my report, um, we're gonna be having a yard sale slash back-to-school event, um, we're gonna have details to follow in our monthly newsletter. Uh, we'd like to, um, state that, um, the time and the date will be in that newsletter, but we're looking forward to partnering with, um, Arkansin County Sheriff's Office to help provide some of the, um, the many needed supplies for our, um, community residents and their children, um, so we ask those to look out for that newsletter to be, um, coming out probably in a second to last week of August, um, and we look forward to, um, having a lot of people participate, so if you're looking to participate in that event, or if you'd like to participate in the yard sale, please make sure that you reach out to our Madam Clerk, Cheryl, her number is eight five six nine six two eight three zero zero, extension two one four. Alright? And one other thing I do want to mention, thank you, sorry about that, one other thing I do want to mention for our National Night Out that I forgot to mention before, is, um, that we look forward to having this event, um, for next year and maybe doing something bigger as well. Alright, thank you, and this is my report for the month.
You heard the report of Public Affairs, Public Affairs, can I get a motion, second to receive a file?
Motion.
Motion by Council Chueki, second by Councilman Fuentes, any question?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point here, we can call the public work, Council President Early.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Solicitor, members of council and members of the public, this is the Public Works, uh, monthly report for July, 2019, recycling, week number one, we had seven thousand nine hundred pounds or three point nine five tons. Week number two, eight thousand eighty pounds or four point zero four tons. Week number three, seven thousand six hundred and forty pounds or three point eight two tons. Week number four, six thousand eight hundred and forty pounds or three point four two tons. Week number five, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds or three point eight nine tons. So total recycling was thirty-eight thousand two hundred and forty pounds or nineteen point twelve tons. For trash, week number one, fifty-three thousand five hundred and eighty pounds or twenty-six point seven nine tons. Week two, fifty-two thousand four hundred and forty pounds or twenty-six point two two tons. Week number three, fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds for twenty-six point eight nine tons. Week number four, fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty pounds for twenty-six point four three tons. Week number five, forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds for twenty-three point thirty-nine tons. Total trash was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and forty pounds for one hundred twenty-nine point seven two tons. For yard waste, week number one, there was none, week number two, seven, week number three, twelve, week number four, fifty-five, which included a lot of the branches and trees that came down during that storm, for a total of seventy-four yards for yard waste. This was respectfully submitted by Robert Kenny, and that those conclude the Public Works report for the month of July. I do want to add on a side note, Rob and I have met, um, a couple times over the course since I got back from vacation, uh, you know, certain, with certain points of discussion, I did have him order the larger do not enter signs, and I had him put up on Ferry Ave side to try to stop the flow of traffic coming the wrong way from that end. He's now in progress of doing the same on Woodland Avenue, because I was informed while I was away, there was a major incident on Palton Avenue, and I don't feel those little small weight one-way signs are very effective, so he is in the process of doing that. If he hasn't completed all Woodland Avenue, I do know that he did get, uh, Palton, Parker, and then the other next street, I'm not seeing, not just, I'm trying to remember the streets, but he did get most of them done, and we're also, um, keep pointing areas where there's lack of speed limit signage, to start getting, you know, more visible posted signage on Woodland Avenue, just to try and do the best that we can to slow the roll of traffic going down Woodland Avenue. So that concludes my, uh, report for July.
You heard the report of Public Work, can I get a motion, second to receive a file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Torres, second by Councilwoman Feliciano, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. We move forward to orders twenty nineteen dash eleven, public hearing and adoption by title only. This is for, only for twenty nineteen dash eleven. An order is amended in the chapter eighty-seven of the code of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, entirely in parking handy path. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Fuentes, second by Council President Early. At this point, I open it up to the public, on orders twenty nineteen dash eleven. Am I hearing that, I closing? At this point, we move forward, full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty-four, resolution of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, approving the change order for the coastline construction toward the sewer maintenance replacement at Cooper Avenue. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Early, second by Councilman Fuentes, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty-five, resolution of the Borough Woodland, authorizing application for the Borough Engineer to, to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for reconstruction of Parker Avenue and Chester Avenue. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Cook, second by Councilman Fuentes, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty-six, a resolution of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, approving the change order for Gambelli Concrete for the two thousand eighteen NJ DOT Trust Fund in Camden County, CDPB Program, reconstruction of Third Street. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Fuentes, second by Councilwoman Feliciano, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point here, we move forward with Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-seven, a resolution of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, hiring or appointing a full-time police officer for the Borough Woodland. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Early, second by Councilman Fuentes, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-eight, a resolution of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, appointing an active lieutenant in the Woodland Police Department. Can I get a motion, second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Torres, and second by Council President Early. Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Five yes and one no, motion carries. At this point, I'd like to call up for Sergeant, well Lieutenant Robinson, please come up, because we're in it.
I state your name?
Aye, Lieutenant John Robinson.
Do Somme Square?
Do Somme Square.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
And I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
And to the government?
To the government.
Established?
Established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
In this state.
Under the authority?
Under the authority.
Of the people?
Of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I be firm of Somme Square?
I be firm of Somme Square.
That I will impartially?
Partially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
Root ten. According to the best my ability?
According to the best my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, ten.
So I just want to, first of all, council, mayor, director, um, zone one, outside in our departments, prosecutor's office, residents of Woodland, I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to show my leadership in town, I'm born and raised in, um, I'm born and raised here, so it's not like I just moved here, trying to make a name for myself, my name's big here, my family and friends are still here, so.
As picture being taken, I want to say a few words, you know, I met Robinson many years ago, played football, played baseball, very active in the community. Um, when Robinson took, became an officer here, you know, he showed us how proud he was to be an officer here in this community. He took on the responsibility to continue being a leader. Went ahead and followed through the sergeant exam, passed the sergeant exam, and this time here, you know, we got a great director who's been taking this department to a place where it couldn't have been done without his leadership. Unfortunately, you know, fix going to put in, one more year in, and one other thing, it's time to pass the buck, and the leadership has to start with someone who's been leading this department. John Robinson's been an example of his hard responsibility, diligent, what he's done in this community as a sergeant, so now we're taking him to the executive level as an active lieutenant, so he can continue to do what is right for this community, for the people of this town, serving the people, and under his leadership, the guys that do follow under his leadership, knows the person, the character that he is, and what he brings to the table. So I am pleased, and I'm proud for those council members that did vote for him as a active lieutenant, congratulations.
Also, I would like to say, Chuck, it's nice to see you, eh?
You know, Woodland has a great officer that left, and you know, they chose for a different path of career, and, you know, Officer Amico who's here, um, who's now serving with the State Park Police, we welcome him, um, we have a state trooper from Woodland, Officer Beck who's here also, please recognize yourself, raise your hand, please. It's always nice to know that the guys, when they do leave here, it's because they want to pursue a different path, a different career, but also, they never forget where they come from, and to know that they took a step further makes me proud, and makes me proud because of the department that they started and where they came from, so thank you, fellas, thank you all. And for all the other officers that are here, I would like to thank you for your service, thank you for your time, and thank you for what you do. It's not easy, we know the shift changing, we know the responsibility that comes along with your family, your friends, and your job. We wish you well, and thank you for serving your community, thank you. At this point here now, we start with Resolution twenty nineteen fifty-nine, a resolution of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, authorizing payment to Gambelli Concrete. Can I get a motion, second? Motion by Fuentes?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Torres, any question? Full vote?
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nineteen sixty, resolution of the Borough Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, approving the change order for coastline construction at Alcine for the sewer maintenance replacement at Cooper Avenue. Can I get a motion, second? Motion by Fuentes, second by Councilman Early. Question? What is the amount of money that you, um, the amount, when the other one is the change order, or the change order of the work, that's always the resolution. What was the change order on that? The other one was, the other one went, it went higher, but the cost was actually less. Any other question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. A motion to approve the bills? Motion by Council President Early, second by Councilwoman Feliciano, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chueki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes. Oh, yes. Any other need business?
Yes, ma'am, um, I did have my opportunity to, uh, reach out to, uh, some contractors and folks that we could see were, uh, doing the study as well as, uh, get a bit, and by having them come out to take a look at the, uh, we'll, and hopefully to, uh, see if we could have the downspout reinstalled. Um, the picture's that I forwarded to members of council, uh, just as a layout, pretty much of the current conditions of how I build it without the downspout, which was maybe at some point prior to the, uh, council, because it was taken down, um, of course, as I had a, um, engineer, uh, who, who was a company was, you know, beside looking over, uh, the, the, and, uh, we should go with.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, can you speak up?
Mike, he can't hear you.
Having it done at least once out of the year, we, um, might want to push to have the, uh, at least twice out of the year for the re-stuff, um, I did notice that there is debris that was sitting, uh, and one of the, uh, downspouts that we had, um, of course, uh, after, uh, we were pointing out some, uh, key points, which showed at some point, uh, the downspout led into a pipeline that was already adjacent to the ground, and of course, one of the pictures that it shows, uh, every, it shows the little holes that we have, uh, the concrete, the, the water was seeping out at one point, um, the downspout going directly down, of course, in picture number two, of course, we see that at some point, you know, there was construction that was probably done, and those holes that the, uh, downspout entry point were actually covered, you know, by cement. Picture number five, uh, four actually shows, uh, an actual illustration of what it should look like, and I believe how it probably did look like at some point prior to them being taken down. This, uh, shows the correct way that it would go, with a, with a, with a, with a This shows the correct way that it would go, it would be out straight into the ground. And it should come out in picture number six, you can see where it leaves a long side of that little hole. This picture was an illustration that was taken from West Stepford Township, which has a similar, you know, situation as far as how the building is created. But my suggestion is bringing additional people in to try to see if we can cut course without having to actually cut into the concrete or actually replace the concrete just to get, you know, these downspouts where they're going to actually go into the ground. The other thing is the three companies are on the business, they do want to come out. They have set dates to come out within, hopefully by the next council meeting. They should have three bids by then.
So if they don't get by the next meeting, we need to lay them out for discussion at the work session and then decide which direction. Is the way to do it. I appreciate it. You and I have to respond to that. So when you get the bids, if you have any questions or if you need any assistance in getting them, please reach out. Let me know if you have any email. Get it.
Any other? The mic over here, please.
Just wondering, have you thought with the public works, if this is really something that is large or something that can be tested to be your place?
I will say that these are pre-existing. These were just prior to any one of us being on council, either the mayor himself. The construction of the building, this is not the only one that's there. If you look along the concrete of the sidewalk, there's numerous ones that's there. I think it's about eight, four, five. At one point, you know, the downspout actually went down, and to the similarity of what you see with this picture here, it goes underground. So in our case, it would go underneath the cement. As you see with the other picture, they have like a little cutout. The grates. And at some point, they were just covered.
We wish them, as it is possible, you could ask them to see if it could be snatched through and get to the entry point. So that when they're going to break on any downspout, it will be easier. Why am I saying that this picture, which nobody's seen? But as the last picture you have, which is a good thing to do. However, I don't think that sidewalk is built for people to use because there's no connection on that point. Okay, it's just between the perimeter of the building, which has a little slope that runs off to the street. The reason why this is here is because the public isn't this as a sidewalk. So to avoid water, it's hard. That's why this trench is made here to help direct the water out. So. So if, if possible, even if it's not working, you could put the downspout and direct it because you have a slope that can take that out.
Well, let's take a look at, while they do this here, let's take a look what they do. Standing doing the grid, as the council just mentioned, same thing, just bring the downspout and then let it with a elbow and let it run down on the side. Because it does have a pitch, it's not actually flat where it's counted, but it could be with the runoff that comes along the side.
I just want to, you know, see if we can be careful with that too, because I would prefer that it does go back into its pre-existing order just with the fact that it could be used a lot for the issue for the borough. In case that water does come down, that water ice up.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, clearly understand. No problem. Let's just look at the phone function, that's all. No problem. All right? All right, um, any other new business? Okay, at this point here, I will go to the public. Please state your name and your address.
Hello, everyone. Jeff Goodwin, 315 Cypress Avenue. Thought I'd stand over here this week so the public didn't have to see my back, but maybe that might be helpful. I have a few things to bring up. First one, just wondering, is there a way to get an additional trash can at the Fourth Street and Evergreen Park? When you go into that park, there's one like recycling can that fills up pretty quickly. And during the summertime, you know, it gets emptied, it looks like once a week from Public Works when they're doing the regular trash.
We can get another trash can.
Okay, that's great. Just curious to know what the status is of the demolition of the House 106 Chestnut.
We had another company come out with another quote. We're waiting on the three quotes so we can move forward then. I have the one already, waiting on the other one, the other two to come back. Once I get there, we'll be ready to rock and roll.
Okay. The last couple of meetings, we talked about the intersections of Parker and Palatin and Woodland. Just curious to know if the council and mayor have done.
I left a message for Mark. Mark was on vacation. There's been a few things over this, so I'm getting ready, so I have to set up a meeting with Mark.
I'm sorry, I don't like with Mark.
Mark is the engineer that represented Borough also, from Bock Associates.
Oh, okay. All right, and.
So he can't be at every town, so he has represented it for different towns, so that's why.
No, no, I get that.
That's what I'm saying. I was just saying, you're wondering who's Mark. Mark is.
Yeah, 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 Mark from Bock Associates.
Yeah, he's our representative.
Okay, and the purpose of meeting with him is to try to implement either stop signs or Mr. Chueki's moving one way or the other direction? Thank you. Let's see, we also have discussed the last couple of meetings, the intersection of Evergreen and Front Streets. And the last meeting, there was going to be some additional investigation. Just curious to know where that.
Uh, refresh my memory a little bit. The investigation between Evergreen and Front Street, where's that?
Melissa had, Buck had brought up a couple of meetings ago that cars regularly blow through that stop sign. And there was a suggestion last month of maybe doing a stop bar and crosswalk there. But you had indicated you were going to have an additional investigation done.
Yeah, that's something that the police department will have to, again, figure out how they're going to try to look at that. Unfortunately, I mean, that's not the only spot that people do stop. They should be going through where there's a clearly stop sign there, people blowing it, you know, not paying attention, you know? You know, we can't put crossbars in every intersection, but I understand what you're saying. But again, it's just trying to, hopefully people are not blowing through them, you know? But the only thing is, how much purely can we make it? So my thing would be to sit down and, you know, see what other option we can do to try to prevent that.
Okay, so we can talk about that next month?
Yes.
Okay, what's the status of the master plan reevaluation?
Well, Steve is going to get back to us, as you mentioned, when he saw him, he was at the meeting, he's going to put something. It's the, to present something for council so we can prepare ourselves to budget for that.
Okay, so that's not going to happen this year, it's going to happen next year?
For next year.
That wasn't the impression I got at the meeting last time, the impression I got from.
It's not going to be, this is something we discuss to further move forward for next year's budget.
Okay, but Steve did put on the record that we currently don't have a master, valid master plan. And therefore, we are subject to zoning challenges because of that.
And I'm very clear with that. If there's nothing being done majorly, that is going to affect us.
Okay, when that's done, are you also going to budget to, for, create rehabilitation areas?
We'll sit down with the next mayor that's there and then address that matter with the engineering council.
Okay. Last month, I brought up that the Woodland budget was not on the Borough website, which is required by New Jersey statutes. You had indicated that Ms. Davis would get that done before this meeting.
We were hoping, she was on vacation. She also travels to do other contracts. So again, it's just a matter of her putting it on, so we're hoping she can get that soon as possible.
Is she an employee, Ms. Davis?
Not an employee, no. She handles the website.
Is there somebody else? Because as I brought up at the last meeting, the website is, you know, I heard.
I understand, but they've got to get someone to do it. And unfortunately, you know, I mean, it's like, who's going to want to take that responsibility at this point? I don't have anybody to do it at this point. The key thing was to get a website. We have a website. Key thing is to try to put what we can, what we have.
Okay, I would think a key thing would be to comply with New Jersey statutes, which requires the budget to be on the website.
We comply with what we have to do. We put it in the newsletter, we have copies here. When we get this, when Ms. Davis has the opportunity to put it in, she'll put it in.
So what you're saying is that statute 48, comma, four.
Now, this is not to switch my words.
I'm not switching words. We either comply or we don't comply.
I'm just trying, when she gets a chance, we give it to her, when she gets a chance, she'll put it in, okay?
So who manages her to do that then?
This is something that is brought over at the time to time of the need in the case, okay?
Okay, I also suggested that the latest audit be posted on there. Is that something that she's going to be given to post the latest audit on there?
Yes, she'll put in the audit in there.
Does the Borough have copies of the latest audits that were done?
Yes.
If that's the case, then why hasn't the Borough fulfilled my request through Oprah to provide me copies of the audits?
But Jeff, you bombarded us with Oprah requests, you know what I'm saying? So there was some stuff that was not at the hand of the clerk because we have a new CFO, where you put those documents at. Was trying to get those documents to put it in there. Okay, sure has those copied for you. We had stuff that needed to be looked at, so documents are there for you to pick up.
Okay, so on Monday, I can pick up the audits. Fantastic, thank you. A few months ago, there was discussion about a speed radar sign. That was back in May. Just curious to know where that stands.
The trailer has been completed ninety-nine, ninety-five percent. So this way here, what we were going to do with this speed sign, so it's not mounted on a certain one location, is to be on a trailer and move to a different location from where we feel is needed and needs to be put there.
Okay, as Council President alluded to earlier, it's kind of important to try to get the speeds down on Woodland Avenue. So what do you think? Is this something that we're going to see this in the next week, like next month? What's the timing of getting this mobile?
I would say within the next two weeks.
Okay, prior to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. What's the plan to replace the Borough clerk?
At this point here, we'll have to sit down with the finance committee and the council and then determine that decision.
When, when did the, I'll say prior Borough clerk resign?
At the end of June.
At the end of June? Okay. Thank you. I had brought up a couple of meetings ago about the possibility of contacting the county to see if they would be willing to look at the equalization rate for the taxes. And at the last meeting, you said you had not had the opportunity to do that. Wanted to know if you had the opportunity since the last meeting to reach out to the county to see about that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Can you do it before the next meeting?
I will try, see what my agenda and what I have, I will try.
Okay, if you give me the person's phone number, I'll be willing to call them.
Jeff, I will try.
Okay. And just want to ask again, what's the process? We're coming closer to the end of the year, we're now August. Soon you will be stepping down as a full-time mayor. What's going to be the program process to hire a full-time administrator?
We will have to see on that.
Okay. Who decides when that's moving forward?
Council and myself at this point. I will determine at this point how we're going to move forward then.
Is that something that's done at a council workshop meeting? Is that done at a public meeting?
Workshop.
Okay. So, but there's no timeframe whether it's.
Don't know where the step we're going to take yet, okay? No rush for it, Jeff, relax. Somebody will have that possession, relax.
Well, I just hope we get a qualified person, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have two things.
State your name, coming up.
Sandra, 104 Evergreen. I just have two things, one about the code about the pool issue, which I brought up several times at 108 Evergreen. I think sometime in the middle of April, as you know, I brought about the neighbor having a very large pool that was filthy and mold, and I don't know if it's mold or algae or something, it was green. And I personally, it was covered in mosquito bites, and I was concerned where it coming from. And it made sense that it probably came from this pool. I called the mosquito commission and they confirmed live mosquito larvae was in that pool. And they wrote it up and they said, yes, they're, we confirmed, and they scooped it up and they said, this is live mosquito larvae in the pool. I, so far, they attempted to drain it last Friday. It took about two weeks. There was excuses that they were in hospital. And I had to call the cops because they were draining it and possibly flooding the whole area, which is what they did last year. I caught it in time this year. But that's a concern of mine because right now, it's, there's still a significant amount of water in it. Probably rainwater because it's not properly covered. And, you know, it's a risk. And then they have a lot of kids in that home. So if it's that filthy and that much mosquitoes and, you know, outside the house around all those children, being exposed to all that very, you know, high risk of health conditions.
Let me, let me, let me stop you there for a second, okay? We have not received any report from the county. Normally, the county would follow up with a report. We've not received anything. When the individual came over, she showed some footage of pictures. There was no saturation of water sitting there. There were also, when the officer arrived to the location, the officer said that there was no puddle, no big thing of water. So I don't know where the story's coming from. So right now, from the police report, we don't have anything that's stating that what you're saying. And we have not received a report from the county stating that there is a mosquito issue there, okay? But what I will say to you is that, like I said to you, is that the next newsletter, we will make it aware for residents to know that if there is water that is sitting because of the mosquito, please drain it properly. Please do not allow more water to sit because of the course of nature, okay?
Yeah, because it's not just about drainage, it's also covering.
I understand. We'll put something in the newsletter.
Flush and taunts and.
We'll put something in the newsletter, Sandra, thank you. Anything else?
And then about TNR, I know this is last year, I'm just bringing it up again, it's a kitten season. You know, cats are being born probably daily right now. I know on Evergreen, I'm seeing a lot of kittens. I've rescued at least four litters in the last month.
Are you trying them over to the shelter?
Um, I've gotten rescues, thank goodness.
Hold on, hold on, can I get the tape on? All right, because you cannot have more than five, okay?
Yeah, no, I can't take, there's no way I can take them. But rescues have taken them.
Beautiful.
And, and thank goodness, and, you know, and got good homes and things. But it's just that this is a time that they keep getting born, and I don't know what progress has been made. I know rescues have come out and tried to, you know, do some TNR.
It's a progress. You got to try, you got to get people trained and people to, who's going to be the caretaker, caretaker to handle this. And that's the situation. Nobody has come up to figure this out. I've talked to Lisa Welch, who is our animal control, and she's willing to see if she can do some kind of training. We will have to see who's interesting coming over.
I think we should find out who's feeding because those are the people who should do TNR. And I know there's a lot of feeding, and those, the people who are feeding are the people that should be doing TNR.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, okay? All right, anything else on that?
That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
136 Elm Avenue. Question. The trash can that is at the corner of Front and Elm Avenue, what purpose is that trash can there for?
That was put there, I believe, when people started complaining about the school kids putting, like, dropping trash at the corner property there, around that area. So they had requested that it can be put there.
Who requested it came?
The people that used to live in that home that's across from yours, that's like across the street from the school. That's who requested that be put there because they were throwing a lot of trash in her yard.
Because the trash can really is being used for everyone dumping their dogs that do pickup behind it in the trash can. And people that live on the street dump their trash in there, it's full. At this time of the year, they have dog stuff dumped in the trash can. People that live there have to smell it.
Smell dog stuff, okay. I can request the Public Works may report for you.
Well, I mean, I'm not asking it to be removed. The purpose is, I was just trying to find out because.
Yeah, because like I said, it was put there because of the previous homewalk.
Ones that do pickup behind their dogs, dump, and they've, they've done it there.
Right, right.
And then people walking by dump their trash and throw it in front. And then other people, instead of using trash cans, dump their trash in front of it if it's full.
Could either. If they could remove it or possibly like step up the amount of times that they go, I mean, because obviously you don't want to smell dog mess in the heat of summer.
You don't need to stay outside.
Yeah, you don't want to stay outside and smell that. So I can either request them to remove it or up the amount of times, like maybe twice a week, come by and dump that. Because I know a lot of the smaller ones on the ends of the streets, they load up rather quickly to overflow. And sometimes it looks a little ridiculous, you know, so I do agree with you on that one. You know, so I. And sometimes it, it looks a little ridiculous, you know, so I do agree with you on that one. Um, you know, so I will ask him to see if he can accommodate one way or the other, what we can do for you.
Thank you.
Your word.
Anyone else want to comment? Uh, Chief, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, um.
It's all right.
Move front off. I know, anything you'd like to say with Sergeant Lieutenant Robinson of the Police Department?
Mayor, I'm patient. What I wanna do is, I wanna thank council for having foresight to approve lieutenant's position within the county, within the police department. What you have to understand is, every organization must have an organizational chart. And you must have people that are identified and that you know that they are supervisors. And especially within the police department with the type of work that policemen do. I think the mayor touched on some of those situations where our police officers work shift work. Sometimes they finish their shift and they still have to continue on paperwork with, uh, to make sure that they finish that. And it may take several hours after their shift. Lot of times, if you don't have enough personnel, you have to take away their vacation when they thought that, you know, they had it planned ahead of time. It's a very, very difficult job. And the other thing that they have to do is they have to balance what they do with policies and procedures, the constitution, the ten amendments to the Bill of Rights, law, Title Thirty-nine, two C, and many others. So when that police officer is gonna make a decision, it's not where he just jumps in there and makes that decision. He has to let all these things go through his mind or her mind so that they work right, so he makes or she makes the right decision. The landscape of policing has changed dramatically. People are out there with cameras. They take photographs of individual situations that occur. And let me just say this. They say that there are bad police officers, and that's absolutely correct. There are bad police officers. And the way I look at it, and our officers look at it, is if you're a bad, bad police officer, you shouldn't be a police officer. And if you do something wrong, just like anybody else, and you break the law, you go to jail. Just like politicians, police officers, and anyone else. So what we try to do in, in, in our police department, we're small, we're not that big. Now, when you saw all those police officers, police officers in the back, I figured you might think that they were all Woodland police officers, and the taxpayers might get a little jittery. No, we have police officers from the state, from the county, the prosecutor's office, and also within the municipalities around us that we work together. And one of the things is that if you're a police officer in a sport, in any jurisdiction, you wanna make sure that you have camaraderie with everyone around you. If you don't have that, you don't have a good police department. And we have that. As you saw, most of them were off duty. They put on their uniforms and come in. And what they wanted to do is show their camaraderie for the Woodland Police Department and Lieutenant Robinson. And it's you council that we have to come to, well, we need equipment because you have the money bags. And you're the only ones can, that can actually go out there and say, we're gonna approve that for the police department. Equipment for the police department is very, very expensive. And with all the, uh, computers and, and, and all the other equipment that, that uses wireless, uh, things. And if you go into a, a, a police car, you see all the other equipment that sits in there. If, if you have an accident with all those sharp edges and a teleprinter and all those other things, and watch your police officer. Look, look, look at what they have around their belt. Right now, they don't have all their equipment on because they just came up here administratively. But they have tasers, they have batons, they have mace, they have guns, they have ammunition. And there is an expectation on, on people that are not police officers or not to be police officers, that these individuals can be superheroes, chase down people with all this equipment. And no, it doesn't happen that way. And certainly, when you, when you look at what happens as far as arresting people, we arrest people many times, and then it's looked at by the prosecutor's office on serious crimes. The prosecutor then decides, do we have, first of all, the officer has probable cause, because you need probable cause to make the arrest. Then the prosecutor looks at it and says, hm, is this beyond a reasonable doubt? That this individual committed this crime? So you, 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 now you have to gather evidence to show that there is no way that no, any other person committed that crime other than that person. And if you think that the mounds of paperwork that a police officer does during the shift is not that great, let me tell you. I sit there, I watch them, filling out paperwork, filling out sometimes, uh, when, when you have domestic violence situations, we have to contact the judge, fill out paperwork, try restraining orders. And then a couple days later, the individual that made the complaint comes back and says, I don't wanna follow through with that. And then, weeks later, the same individual, same complaint, and guess what? We have to take that on face value. So I'm not making excuses for police officers. I just wanna educate the public so that you know exactly what police officers do. And it's not just police officers that suffer, their families also suffer. Games that you miss, when you think that you're gonna have an affair and something happens or an emergency and you're out there. But let me, just look at this scene. This is one scene that I, I, I think really, really shows you what a police officer does. Nine eleven. I'm sure that you all watched television on nine eleven, when you saw the towers go up. What did you see? People running out of there and the police officer running in, along with the fire department. That takes guts. Sixty police officers, three hundred thirty-four firefighters died in that situation. It's a dangerous job. So far, two thousand eighteen, a hundred and forty-four police officers killed in the line of duty in the United States. And every year, that climbs. And when you see a police officer get in a car, he or she, they don't know what to expect. It could be a town like Cherry Hill, it could be a town like Woodland, it could be any town. We have individuals that are out there that have a target on police officers. We have the mentally ill that we have to know how to handle. And let me say something. State of New Jersey and every state in the United States has done nothing to curtail or to assist those individuals that are mentally ill. However, when something happens and the police get involved, who gets blamed? The police officer. They think that we're trained in every, every aspect as counselors, psychologists, uh, nurses, uh, and, and all these other things. And basically, we just touch the surface. We've only touched the surface. But when it comes time to blame the police officers, because twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they represent the municipality. When everybody in the municipality goes home, the only representation that you have is that police officer that's out there. So please, understand that when a situation occurs, you need your police officers. You need to provide them with the equipment that they need. And look at the other situation that we have now. Is when someone runs into a school, when you have an active shooter. Years ago, what we would do is, we would stand by, call for assistance, and not go enter the situation. Today, it's mandatory that that police officer, by himself or herself, run in there, seek out that individual in that school or in that crowd, and engage. And that's, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to kill them. Because the thing is, once you arrive there, you still have to think about that constitution, the Bill of Rights. Do you shoot or do you not shoot? Well, if you get there and that individual doesn't do anything to threaten you or any other, anyone else after they've done this carnage, you can't shoot them. You have to arrest them. So, yes, police departments are open for all types of criticism. And a lot of people do a lot of great criticizing. Put yourself in their place. That would be different. Think about it.
I wanna close off with one thing. Um, first of all, thank you, um, Director Figueroa, thank you. But I wanna close off with one thing. And I'm not one for the social media to feed on to that. But there is times that you have to call someone out when they're misleading the public. So, and I'm here, I just wanna clear the air. This is not something to start picking here and there. But I, I am puzzled when I read this. Someone forward this to me. Councilman Cook, you posted, "Due to the fact that the reports were being done in the past by the mayor who were soon administrative duty, yet later, after being confronted by me, the borough hall passed the buck onto Cheryl, then later, uh, passed it to Muggsy." Muggy, but it's Muggsy. But never himself shaking my head, right? Well, Councilman, you're the one, when I was doing your report, you're the one that said you're gonna be doing them all from now on, so you didn't want me to do it, correct?
Mayor, what I asked of you was to, uh, three months prior, going into meeting, to submit to me the reports on what we've done as far as home rentals for the month, the total for the year. If I'm correct and if I stand correct, you are the one that's handling administrative duties, correct?
But I was doing your report and you told me not to do it. You were gonna do it from now on.
Once again, Mayor, did I ask you, do you handle administrative duties?
Yes, I do.
So as a, as an individual that handles administrative duties, when I came to that office and I sought you for the report and you sat up there and you took the information and told me, place it on paper, I gave you that information. You then in turns handed that information to Muggsy and Muggsy handed it back to you. And then you said, come back and get it, Cheryl will give it to you.
I said to you, I will put it in Cheryl's bin, and Cheryl will get you that.
Now, once when I came back there and I tried to retrieve the report, I tried to retrieve the report from you, Mayor. And you said Cheryl has the report. When I went to Cheryl, Cheryl didn't know what I was talking about.
It was on her bin, so she didn't look at it? And that's, that was not a problem. But let's just go back.
Mayor, uh, we're not, we're not done, we're not.
I'm gonna let you finish, go ahead.
Right after that, you looked at Cheryl because she said she's not in charge of doing that.
I did not say that, did I say that, Cheryl?
And you said, you, your words was.
No.
Your words was, Muggsy is the one that does it. I'm looking at you, I looked at you directly because when I came down here to ask you for that information, Muggsy was there. When I handed you the information, you could have easily have gave it to Muggsy. But you didn't give it to Muggsy. You said you placed it into Cheryl's desk or into her bin. So at the end, if Muggsy's in charge of it, why couldn't you have given the report to her for her to fill out the report? And give me the information as far as the home rentals. It's kinda difficult to sit up here and hear residents talk about home rentals that are taking place. And they feel, you know, that they're not being given an accurate account, uh, account as far as who's renting the hall. And they're making assumptions that, you know, members of council or certain residents given a, a break. So that's why I read the, the, the total for the month. And then I asked you specifically for a yearly balance. And then I also asked you, where does this money go? And your specific word was, it goes back into the general fund.
And it does.
My thing to, my thing to you is, why couldn't it be put, placed into a separate account for the sole use of the hall?
Just like you said, excuse me, excuse me, I'm an extra.
It was a question asked to them.
You went and asked, you went and asked Michael Frazier at his work for, he's no longer here, but you went to bother him because he told you, went away to bother him. So you asked him and he gave you the answer. He said, you cannot take that fund and put it into account because the state will not allow you. So you're now, you knew this, but yet you posted.
Mayor, this is after.
Let me come back, I let you speak, I let you speak.
No, you said Michael.
No, it's my turn now, it's my turn, it's my turn. You can speak now. So the key thing here that I'm trying to say to you, Councilman, is, I was doing your reports, I was giving you the amount, I was giving you the date, I was telling you, I was giving you the person's name, okay? Then you said to me, you said, I will be doing my own report. And I said to you, okay. Did I or did not say that to you?
Mayor, be.
Because did you, let me ask you my question, I can't.
Mayor, I'm answering your question. Being informed, being informed of rentals, just one thing. Being informed of rentals. If you're gonna hold the rental, I should be informed who's going to rent the hall, not come and pop up at the borough and see people up here partying and I wasn't told what, who's renting the hall. So when I asked you.
Advance who's renting the hall.
It's my.
You don't have the right to decide who does or does not.
It's not a, you didn't hear me say, you have the rights, you don't have the rights to rent the hall.
Because I wanna say is, you said that you were gonna do your own report, yes or no?
Mayor, I said I would handle my own report. Now, if I inquire to you, you handle administrative duties.
You know what I'm gonna do better? I'm gonna play you the tape.
Play it.
Because at the meeting, I told you that you can just ask Muggsy or Cheryl for the report, not me. Because you asked me not to do it. So you can listen to the tape. So it's clearly what you said. So you wanna go ahead and start to say that it's my responsibility when I was doing it. And yet, you were, you decided to drop the ball. So we can all listen to it.
Point is, I can't catch that name.
It was on the card that I gave her. But, so Mayor, point is, I can't catch that name. Anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to pour, um, tell you, we have to be able to deal with the whole report, I don't think.
Okay.
I'm also asking if we can have, uh, a separate account set up as far as to give, uh, some confirmation, chief confirmation, current and active as far as how much the business is possibly, as well as given a yearly total.
For the department?
For my department, payment of the hall rental.
Well, that's on the, well, here's the thing, let me explain to you where that goes. If you want from month to month, it could vary how it goes. Because someone can come in in May and say, I wanna pay for the hall rental, but I need it for July. So that money's gonna show in the May report. And actually, and then if I put it into the May report for your total, the problem with that is, they can say, you know what, I found something else, um, I, I can't have the event, I need to cancel that event. So if you can't believe that money now, it's gonna be throwing you off. You'll get a year today, the end of it, what you get, but it's always in there. And that's the problem, because even in the bill, it shows, that's why that time when, um, I, I think, I was in the report, um, where he say, there's this much in the account. And I say, because not truly that May, that was a May money. That was the money that was collected. And that ain't no problem, you can get that. But just take in mind that, that number probably won't match with your work was actually collected for the May, for, for who rented the hall.
Yeah, I just want to be able to have a separate account set up, you know.
It is set up, it is set up on separate account.
So it says it's not, it has something to do with the general fund?
No, no, no. And, and that goes into the current account, but it all line item. You have a specific, when the captain reads, um, rental inspection, how much in that event was done for this hall, how much money was collected. Then when he reads, um, our demerits license, it was four, then they'll tell you how much. And everyone has a line item. So you will know exactly what it's broken down.
So if we have, if we're looking at it as a separate department, in other words, the monies that we are collecting for rentals we use for, as far as upkeep for the hall. And to hear your saying as far as hopefully renovation in the near future.
No, 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 you have a separate line item. If you do a bank account, then you're gonna be charged for a separate bank account. But it's, it is all separate, and that's the way it's broken down. You will show for every dollar that's collected for your department. It already shows. But every time there's money that's accumulated that goes into your department, it specifically, if somebody say, I wanna go to hall rental, let's say hall rental, there's a code for that one. Let's say it's O twenty-five. So you pick in O twenty-five and it goes into for hall rental, who, who rented it and for what day. Boom. Then you go in and somebody wants a demerits license, it goes there. For building inspection, it goes to, for construction official, it goes to a different line item. Taxes is zero, zero, one. Um, O fourteen is DCA fee. Um, O twenty-three is construction permits. O thirty-three is rental inspection. So everything's broken down. So your department is broken down. All right, if you wanna know how much you have collected to the date now, it's not a problem, it shows. Either myself or Muggsy can give it to you. Yeah? You wanna know the rental?
Yeah, so to be informed of any rental that we have, nothing else. Do you have any interest in that?
No problem. Just take aware of that. Also, you wanna check that if there is a cancel, because that has happened, that there is a cancel, that you accumulate and start saying, well, what happened to this hall rental? Okay, you also wanna know that there's a hall rental that was refunded, so. Not a problem. Either way, you can just finish showing, that's not a problem. Either through Muggsy or myself, we can get that. If they do it, if they do it within the week before, then they get the money back. Remember, it's Woodland residents. So ideally, they need.
So ideally, they is, you know, we're not going to hurt them. I mean, nobody had. If we were to give out a cancellation to somebody saying, you know, I really wanted the hall, then we could say, hey, um, there's nothing saying that you have to settle another on that, like if they cancel. If they cancel within the week time, then that's fine. Okay? But I understand that um we try to give them the opportunity to, you know, if they if they didn't use the hall for whatever reason, why keep them on?
What is this office, this office called? Um, not the two years, not that many years, or that long?
No, we. What do you get? No, actually, we we lowered it. It was five hundred. We lowered it. Yeah.
So I just want to touch base that again, as freshen up the memory now. That the money and all the accounts, as you stated, you know, should goes into a general account. The money does goes into the general current account. And also, it's being separated for the hall, which collected. But you can't use that fund to say, I want to fix up the hall because it's not allowed. Okay? So it's the report. When you said to me when I was doing it, you were not happy with me doing it. So that's why when I say, let Cheryl know. When you dropped off the paperwork, you say, I want a report for this. I said, write it down and I'll give it to Cheryl and I'm putting it in her inbox. Okay? So if you were not happy with the service that I was giving you, then that was fine. Then Eileen can provide it for you and print it out. Okay? So in the future, if you want something, just write it down. Either give it to Cheryl so she can forward to the right path. Okay? That's all I'm asking. Motion to adjourn. I'm going to see who's favorite. No, I'm not going to continue on this one, please.
It's not always a good thing to bring this up in this way. Uh, Mr. Councilman Cook, you live very close there. All you need to do is to walk downstairs and discuss whatever that is not clear to you. And request what you need to request and post them on those things in the Facebook. Because sometimes if it's not true to the fact, it's kind of like I debate whoever is being talked about. So I don't see any reason why you can't reach out. I thought I'd put it up there for everybody to be aware that can bring a situation like Justice's case. That's all I'm saying.
Well, in in response to you and in response to mayor, once again, if I go to the individual, because he said himself and Muggsy, to inquire about the hall rent, and I'm not being told anything. And then here we are, month after month, I'm standing here to give a report and it's not going to me. Every member of council.
You have not acted.
Every member of council have their reports.
You have not acted, councilman. You come over.
I'm going to stop now.
You come over and you want to inquire other stuff. You inquire other stuff, councilman, but you do not ask for the report. So I'm not going to go back.
Mayor, I asked you about the hall. Do you not put your hall up on the calendar upstairs?
I'm not the only one. No, I'm not the only one.
But once again, are you the one that handles administrative duties?
For hall rental, no.
Do you not handle administrative duties?
Yes.
Do you not, are you not?
Are you in charge of building? Are you in charge of building? And probably, okay. So why are the others bitch? Why are you paying?
Mayor, I'm not the one that took down the dummies.
Why did you get those stuff paid?
You are a part of administration.
I'm not going to continue.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm just going to say, you know, we're good. Motion to adjourn.